This conference will now be recorded.
Call this meeting in order. Roll call Shannon.
Mayor Vio.
Here.
Mr. Campos.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Butcher.
Here.
Mr. Dandy.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Campos will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you join me in prayer, please? Lord, we want to thank you for all your blessings. Even though we're living in pandemic times, we know that you were always by our side. We ask that you bring comfort, peace, and consolation, especially to those in our community who have recently lost loved ones. We pray for the repose of the souls of those dearly departed as well. Lord, help us to make the best and most righteous decisions for our citizens and for the good of our entire Leavington community. And we ask to say in your precious Son, Jesus Christ's name, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the Zia symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, Mr. Campos. Do you have a motion to approve the gentle?
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Roll call vote Shannon.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Vio.
Yes.
Moving on to, do you have a motion? Consider the minutes.
So moved. That's second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bo. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Roll call vote Shannon.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Mayor Vio.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner and staff reports. Public Works Director Wyatt.
Mayor Commissioners, just like to give you a brief update. On Friday, yes, Thursday afternoon, January 21st, we received word from Cardinal Labs in the state that one of our normal routine sites came back positive with a trace of E. coli and total coliform. And on, we're instructed from the state and to conduct our next set of samples, which is the same site in upstream and downstream and all of our source wells. Those tests were conducted on Friday. We did receive those results on Saturday, 23rd at 6:30 that night PM, with the upstream showing a positive for total coliform. We waited for the instructions from the state of New Mexico on, for moving forward with the, what next, for, what next to go with. And on 2:00 PM on Saturday, the state issued a, or Sunday, the state issued a boil order violation. And we have 20, had 24 hours to put out notice to the customers of the city of Leavington. And I believe it was roughly 3:00, 3:30, 4 o'clock, the city of Leavington opted to go ahead and put out the notice to the city customers and made contact with the news radio station, which live air comes on Monday. Today, we did get direction from the state on testing our, the three sites, which is the original site in upstream and a downstream. And we have to have two consecutive days with absent total coliform or total, or bacteria in the water. We did take one sample this morning and we will be taking the next sample tomorrow. And those will be two days, but they do have to be absent for anything to, for the state to rescind the boil order notice. And possibly, and then the earliest we would know will be Wednesday from the state.
Is there any questions for our Public Works Director?
I have a question here, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dandy.
Wyatt, if, if a citizen wanted to have their water tested, where would they take their samples or where would they get their samples at? Or sample, uh, glasses or whatever we need there? Where could they get, they get the things they need and where would they take it to to get their water tested?
Mayor Dandy, they could actually contact Cardinal Labs, which is in Hobbs, and they would have to spill out or go receive the bottles from them and receive a special sample request form. And I believe they could actually contact the city of Hobbs lab, which is located at their wastewater treatment plant. They do the same set of samples and that would still, need to go or contact them and get a bottle and the paperwork needed for that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, someone asked me today and I did not have an answer for them. So I was thinking that's what it was, but it's good to have their information. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Wyatt Scott Bold here.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to find out, like you said, you did everything, you followed protocol, what you're supposed to do. Is there any, as far as informing the people of Leavington, would it be beneficial to inform the people when this was found out on the 21st? Or the way that following protocol that you've done it?
Commissioner Bo, we followed the state protocol. And we, on the first set of samples for the, we, they, the state always recommends that we do an upstream and downstream and original source and our source wells prior to, to, to show. So we're following the protocol from the state and the direction from the state.
Right, I was just wondering if this happens, if it would be beneficial to let the people know? Because from the, you said the 21st till yesterday mid-afternoon, as far as people were using contaminated water. I understand, you know, with your tests and everything, you have to get, find out. But I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial next time that, if this happened to let the people know beforehand so that they could make a judgment, a better judgment? If they wanted to drink the water or boil the water or use the water? That's my question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Campos here. I just had a question for Wyatt as well. Wyatt, just for confirmation, our actual wells were not contaminated. These samples that were positive came from actual sites from residences. And it appears that it could be, can you, do you have any speculation on that? I'll let you speak on that.
Yes, sir. On the repeat samples that we, the city did on Friday, we do test all of our source wells, which every trace, every source well, 17 wells, came back absent. On the current, our routine samples for the address and the upstream, downstream are in-town addresses and they are taken on the outside to the houses with sample bottles. So it's a possibility that during the process of sampling, there might have been an error on anything flying into the system or into the bottle, the sample bottle. Or, but it was taken on in-town after chlorination of the water, the city water.
Okay, thank you Wyatt. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
So, so, so that is clear that it wasn't from our sources. It was from in-town, correct? Is that correct? From, from our, it wasn't, it wasn't contaminated at our well site. It was at one of our test sites in town.
Yes, from one of our routine sample sites was the total coliform, the positive E. coli.
Appreciate that, Wyatt.
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
One more question, please. Wyatt, can you kind of go over the protocol for how our employees take a sample and different things like that?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Dandy, we, we're all certified operators, go to school. And during some of our classes that we do take, they do explain the procedures for approaching a sample site. And for our employees that are certified operators that do, we do use an isopropyl alcohol and we clean the site. At first, we walk up to the site, we open up the faucet, we let it run for approximately 30 seconds to two minutes to flush the system, to pull the water from the alley into the, into the house, all the way to the front hose bin. And we take a chlorine residual and based upon the chlorine residual, we clean the, clean the faucet, clean our hands, open the sample bottle, face the lid on the downward side and then take the sample, fill it to the line and place the sample bottle lid back on. We, we do this on 15 samples a month at 15 different locations. And we, that's, he's very cautious about it and that's all. It's the same.
I was just, I just, I just kind of wanted to know for myself, so I kind of understood what the, the process was for getting a sample instead of, you know, use my coffee cup from last week and. So, you know, I figured there was a process, but I wanted to make sure. And if, if my memory serves me right, I want to say this is like the third time in the last 20 something years we've had to boil water? Something like that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dandy. I've been here 14 years and I believe this is the third notice that I've, I've been with. I know we had one in 2015. March of 2015 was our middle one and then, yes, currently our current one. So I believe you are correct on that. Just three.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I knew we had one. I didn't think it was in 15. I thought it was a little further away than that. But I remember one when we lived back on Dogwood too. So it's something that does happen periodically, but typically our water is safe for drinking and bathing and everything like that on the higher percentage side.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Wyatt.
Is there any other questions for Wyatt? There's no other questions. Moving on to City Account, Gary.
Yes, through your mayor and commission. I'd like to report that the head of communication with our auditors, they had a delay on completing the audit, giving it to us. They tried to make some communication today, didn't get a response back. However, we are anticipating by the 15th of February having our audit completed.
Is there any questions for Gary?
Yes, Gary. Scott Bold here. Just wanted to find out, are we going to receive any financial updates on how we are doing, basically financially? Being able to see how our balances and our accounts are hopefully turning around?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, with today's Department of Finance staff report, I'll be giving you an update through the end of December 31st of the status of where our cash is and how much revenue we've received and the expenditures.
Okay, are we going to get any projections on the three months, six months, 12 months, and 18 months? So we'll have a better understanding as far as reducing our furlough, bringing back our employees to full pay and hiring back? Because I'd like to, I'd like to see what your goals are.
I appreciate that. I don't know that we have specific established goals in this regard. However, focusing on our budget and staying within the budget, we're doing our best to, obviously with our reduced budget, stay within those. And we do obviously have expenditures that come along later. For example, debt payments and the insurance payment that just happened. So for example, we would have, if we're working right now with some people that we owe money to, to have some debt payments deferred that we would have to pay as of the month of May. But that has not been confirmed yet, but that would be a big upcoming expense.
Okay, I'd like to have you keep me posted on that and I'd like to see, be able to see something that we can maybe put our minds all around and work towards getting better here in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could, please, I'd like to address Gary with a, with a comment more than a question. Just to, I just want to reiterate on what Commissioner Bo mentioned just now. Gary, I know that you didn't state any specific goals, but what he stated, and I'm on board with, those are our goals, is to ensure that the employees get their, their payback, that we take them off furlough and then we are able to hire those people back or fill those positions. But those are our goals. And we just want to make sure that, that we're kept abreast on how the GRT is generated, how it's coming in, and how close we are to achieving those goals. I think that's what Commissioner Bo told. And I'm sure the rest of the commissioners feel the same way.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is there any other questions for Gary? Okay, moving on to City Clerk Shannon.
No, sir, I have nothing.
Is there any questions for Shannon? Moving on to Commissioner Bo.
No, Mayor. I am good at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm good at the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Campos?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Commissioner Dandy?
No, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to, Chief, Rob Riggs is not present today, so we're going to move on to, does anybody have any questions for, for James in regards to Chief Rob Riggs? Moving on to Chief Rosario.
Very interesting. I have nothing to report, sir.
Is there any question for Chief Rosario? Thank you, Chief. City Manager James Williams.
The only thing I have to report, Mayor Commissioners, is just an update on the vaccination effort by Norley. As of today, there's been a total of 5,892 vaccinations given. As far as the number of second doses provided, there's been 1,126. This is the combination of Norley Hospital, Covenant Health Systems. We also have Walgreens, Walmart, and I don't recall if PMS is its abbreviation. But they are still, this week, they'll be giving the vaccinations here at Lee County Fairgrounds. They are by appointment only. That'll be Wednesday and Thursday. And then Covenant Health Hospital in Hobbs, which is formerly Lee Regional, they will be providing scheduled boosters on Wednesday. They're currently in Phase 1B. So what they're still doing is working on getting vaccinations to those who are 75 years and older, as well as some other essential positions per CDC. Once they move into the, the next phase, that's where it opens up to utilities. I believe it's age 65 and older, but right now they are tracking for hopefully that phase in the next couple of weeks, they'll be able to get there. And they still continue to offer the, the testing at the Hobbs Fire Station number four and also the old fire station here in Leavington. But that's all I have to report at this time.
Is there any questions for James?
Yes, James Scott Bold here. As far as, would you be able to let anyone know? Let anyone that's on, as far as be able to sign up? I know some people don't have a home computer and any ways to be able to sign up for that vaccine, if you could, please?
So right now, the way that they are arranging for those vaccinations are, Norley is contacting those, they're, they're, basically their patient roster. They are going down the list based on age. They can also go to the public library and register through the state of New Mexico's Department of Health website. What that does is that does put you on a list. And once the vaccine is available for your particular tier, you'll be contacted by the Department of Health. I know one of the issues that they are facing is that, I know Norley does not have access to that database. They are working on that because once this, the vaccination effort gets opened up to everybody, they are going to rely on that database. But right now, the only way to register for that is to utilize the website through the Department of Health. And like we said, the public library, we do have access, you know, free internet and use of the computer for that effort.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for James? This evening, I'd like to make a comment to James and his, and his staff. Due to the lieu of what's been going on here with the city, with the pandemic throughout the state and so forth, as well as our finances, I want to ensure you and your staff that we are all a team. We may not all agree at certain times on different things, but we all move forward as a team. And in that regard, is that if you ever feel like there's an issue, let us know. Don't feel like we're going to be upset. Yeah, we're going to have some debate on it, but don't feel upset or get excited. You know, we're here to work together as a team and move forward as a team. So I really plan, and if we have a situation, and not wait till we have a crisis. So just keep that in mind, you know. So if it comes to mind like, hey, there's a possibility, something going on, don't hold your tongue. Speak out. And, you know, yes, we do debate, but we still move forward as a team. So just keep that in mind and keep your staff in mind that we, we are a team here and we will move forward as a team and we will overcome what has been put in front of us as a team. Thank you, thank you. Moving on to City Attorney Patrick McMahon.
Nothing new to report.
Is there any questions for City Attorney? There's no questions. Can we move on to public comment? Okay, there is no public comment. Going to move on to other items. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to consider a resolution 2021-005, approval of a grant agreement between the state and the city for legislative capital outlay appropriation for Lee Theater improvements. 20-E-2596.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bo. James?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is actually part of the legislative package that was passed during the first session of the 2020 legislature, legislative session. This is actually a grant that is funded through severance tax bonds for improvements to the Lee Theater. It's a total of $150,000 in funds. This is a reimbursement-based grant. Essentially, we have, if, if the commission does approve this and it's submitted back to Santa Fe and the Department of Finance, then executes that agreement, we essentially have three years to spend the $150,000 that has been granted to us. There are some, let me, let me back up. Within six months of execution of the agreement, we do have to obligate at least 5% of the funds that were awarded, which that essentially ties that funding up, so it cannot revert. And, but we do have, have to spend all, all of the grant money within three years. Now, stand for any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please?
Yes, sir.
James, what type of improvements are we looking at? What are we talking about?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioner Campos, the improvements that we're looking at, the next phase of the renovation was to work on the marquee. I know that we still have some remaining, I want to say it's around $49,000 in a previous grant agreement with the Department of Finance towards this project. And I believe Mara Salsito was on the line. She did receive, I believe she received some additional funding towards this project. But the next phase of this is to restore the marquee upfront. But the next phase of this is to restore the marquee upfront.
Very good. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just, first of all, wanted to thank the City of Leavington for being such a great partner in this project. I know this project in particular means a lot to me. I started as an assistant when we first had acquired the theater back in 2016, or 15, actually. And so it's been a long time coming and we've been working on this project, I think, very closely with you guys over the last few years, especially acquiring some additional grant funding. We did receive a $1,000 grant last year from the Historic Trust Fund and that will additionally provide some cushion for the marquee. We have been working with a contractor that restores marquees to ensure that the historic integrity of the marquee is maintained, as well as LED faux neon, so that it is more sustainable long-term for the city as well in terms of utilities. So it's a really good project that we've been working on, like I said, for a very long time. We are additionally pursuing some new grant funding, but this would be for additional projects. Right now, our biggest hope is to be able to restore the Lee Theater marquee and hope that we can use it as a recovery strategy to bring in tourists and visitors from outside of the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Is it any of the Commissioners having questions for Main Street Director Mark?
Yes, Scott Bolt here, Mara. Capital Outlay Funding, can you explain that to me, please?
So this capital outlay funding in particular was given by the state. It is funding basically for construction projects. It was appropriated by our legislators, so we did write a letter to our legislators requesting the funds for the theater marquee in particular, and the state was able to allocate that fund. But since it only goes through with the government agencies, it had to be done through the city. And this capital outlay grant in particular is fully funding the full restoration of the marquee and it cannot be used for anything outside of construction projects.
So as you say, and fully funded, that means that the city has not, does not have to put anything into it?
That is correct.
So the city's not going to be, you know, with what's going on here with their finances. I just want to make sure that the city's not responsible for anything on this project financially or personnel-wise.
No, and this is technically a three-part project. What they do is they fully remove the marquee and then restore it and then they bring it back. There's electrical upgrades that will also need to happen, as well as an awning restoration. But this total project is budgeted at $206,000. And we do have the full grant funding from capital outlay as well as grants.
Okay, and the other money that was appropriated to it before, James, that's in an account, capital outlay? Need for this project?
So it is, so we don't physically have the money. The way that these severance tax bond projects work is that we make the procurement and the purchase and then we submit for reimbursement. But that's how these work. Typically, the reimbursements take anywhere, it depends on the time of the month that it is, that the expense is made. But it can take anywhere from 15 to 30 days for the city to get paid back their money. But there is no match requirement with the severance tax bond grant. The only thing is they will only pay, for instance, with this, this particular grant, it will only pay or reimburse us up to 150,000. But we can use other sources of grant funding, like the previous severance tax bond that was allocated where I said we still have 49, over $49,000 in available funds to reimburse us. So that, you know, that being said, that's why I did mention that we do have three years to move forward on this project. Because the only thing that we have is that we do need to make sure that we maintain our cash balances. So we're not out, you know, $150,000 waiting on a reimbursement. So that's one of the reasons why it does, they do give you three years from execution to complete this project. Is especially in this particular time that we're in, to where we're not out a substantial amount of cash waiting on a reimbursement.
Okay, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a question for James.
Yes, sir.
So you said 5%. So between now and the end of June, early July, we're going to be out 7,500 bucks, just so we can secure it, the $150,000. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, honestly, sir, I believe this would be August by the time everything gets executed, but we have to obligate. So what that means is that doesn't mean that we incur the expense. We basically, we can obligate all of the 150,000 by simply issuing or getting our quotes, putting that together. And then what we do to obligate the funds on these is we send a notice of obligation to the state saying this is the vendor that we're going through, this is the procurement we use, this is the amount of that particular contract. And then what the state does is they issue us a purchase order. And then we basically have, that's how you obligate or tie up those funds. It doesn't mean that you have to make that expenditure. At that point, you actually have basically, I believe the language in the grant agreement says that prior, six months prior to the expiration date on the grant, amount of what they call the reversion date. The reversion date on this one, I believe, is June of 2024. We would have to have actually spent and been reimbursed 85% of the funds.
Okay, I just, I understood it to be that, you know, we had to spend 5% of for them, but obligation is, so, okay. And even if we obligated and funds didn't come in, the worst that would happen to us is we could lose the funding.
Yes, sir, exactly.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other questions? There's no other questions. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt? Commissioner Bolt? Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
He's showing his microphone is active.
Commissioner Bolt?
Does he look great at all? Reson my eyes.
Yes, sir.
I don't know.
Yeah, he looks.
Okay, I can go ahead and just put you on speakerphone. If that'll work, okay. Okay, go ahead, Shannon.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes. Okay. Yes. Raise our losing passes? Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021-006, Approval of a Grant Agreement Between the State and the City for Legislative Capital Outlay Appropriations for Veterans Memorial Park, twenty dash E-2597.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Candy. James?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is another capital outlay appropriation through severance tax bonds for an additional $200,000 to go towards the Veterans Memorial Project, which the planning phase is almost complete. The next phase of this particular project would be the actual design, where we would be able to phase it. This was, this has to date been paid for through another capital outlay appropriation, which there's still remaining 550,000, I believe, remaining in that particular grant, which we still have. I believe the grand reversion date on that one is June of 2023. With this particular additional 200,000, we are still looking at June of 2024, but it utilizes the same process as the Lee Theater.
Is there any questions for James?
Yes, James. Scott Bolt here.
Yes, sir.
As far as on this project, early in this night.
So the planning phase, the only thing that we lack on getting the final, I guess, overall master plan for the project is for us to convene a meeting of the Leavington Parks and Recreation Board in a joint session with the Lee County Veterans Memorial Committee. We bring these bodies together as part of our memorandum of understanding between the city and Lee County for this particular project. Once they approve the final conceptual plan for the project, it would then be submitted to the city commission for their approval, as well as the Lee County Commission for their approval as well. Once both bodies are fine with the overall concept and plan, then we would, since we already have the architecture firm engaged by contract, we would then direct the architectural firm to complete the engineering and the phased plan concept. When I say phased plan, for instance, we would, you know, want to start with underground improvements, all of your infrastructure needs for the ultimate end result, as well as looking at the next phase, which would be, you know, any type of groundwork, dirtwork. Just to phase that where eventually we would have a project, but each phase would provide us a usable portion of the overall project.
Okay, as far as, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked as far as with the Main Street there. As far as this project being funded, are we looking at the project fully funded? No, City Mayor, or what are we looking at at this time?
Given the current economic climate and actually even prior to, we are still seeking out and trying to get the entire full project, which I know that we had initially put the estimates at a total cost of about 4 million. We're still looking for grant funding to complete the project. However, with the amount of funding that we have available, we can still get a lot done without incurring any expense on the city or Lee County outside of grant funding at this point.
Right, okay, because I believe, I don't quote them, but I believe that I barely wanted to, that was going to be our city funding and that's why they turned that down.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I did read that in the paper, but we're trying to find grants for this project.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any questions? There is no other questions. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Mayor, to you.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider Resolution 2021-007, Approval of a Memorandum of Agreement Vaccination Clinics and Hospital Staffing Between the City of Leavington and Norley Hospital District.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bernard. James?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, as we discussed during our special session, Norley Hospital has basically hired back some of our employees who were laid off. To date, they have hired back five personnel who actually went to work last week with the intention that this memorandum of agreement would be approved. They hired four of our full-time employees and one part-time employee. They did have others. These were actually, I guess you would say, the operations folks who were working in the parking lot helping with setups. As far as the data entry positions and the registration positions, it's my understanding that those employees did not accept those positions. What this agreement does is essentially we hire back these employees at their same wage and benefits and they are on loan to the hospital for an indefinite amount of time for use of our vaccination clinics and other needed support areas. Norley, in turn, we invoice Norley for those costs that we incur and the hospital reimburses the city the cost of those salary and benefits of those particular employees. We are looking at, you know, several months of vaccination clinics. And so this looks like this agreement will be in place for several months. Of course, some of the fine details that we do have in the agreement is that the hospital could terminate this agreement with 14 days' notice. So we are, that does coincide with our payroll. And in the event that an issue occurs, the hospital has the right to terminate or end a particular employee's status with the hospital at that time. And then we would make the decision on if they still remain employed as a city employee. They just would not have their salary and benefits reimbursed by the hospital at that point.
Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions by the board. Roll call, vote Shannon.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Mayor, to you.
Yes. Resolution passes? Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021-008, Approval of Fiscal Year 2021, Second Quarter of DFA Reports.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Candy. James?
I can't.
By Major Mayor and Commissioner, I don't, yeah, this is what we need. This one, everybody, to look at the summary report that essentially I give to the Department of Finance. They always expect us to show the beginning cash balance at July 1st and then report of our revenues to date, which in this case is through December 31st of 2020. And then, of course, our expenditures year to date at December 31st, 2020. If you look down at the bottom of those columns, the revenues and expenditures, the expenditures were clearly larger than the revenues. And they exceeded the revenues by over 1.9 million dollars for the first six months of the fiscal year. Now, of course, we already been warned that this is happening, but I am going to share plainly that the basic 1.5 million dollar projection and what we're doing in cuts clearly doesn't equal 1.9 million. Now, we don't obviously anticipate keeping the same level of expenditures. However, it's very important for you to understand that we may need to come back to the table. Okay? So what we have to deal with then is the column that says December 31st, 2020, that's highlighted in the yellowish-orange. That is showing the ending cash balances for each of these funds. That is taking a beginning. That is taking a beginning cash balance, adding revenues, taking expenses, and that's what we ended up with. So a quick comment, because you said, "Come out and state my issues." Why, if you have a negative cash balance in your general fund, would you agree to get a grant and spend money that you don't have? First column. Second comment on negative cash balances, I want you to look down closer to the bottom. We see a couple of funds that should be self-supporting. Oh, forgive me. Can you hear me better now? Sorry, I took the mask off. So when we're looking at the wastewater fund, it has a negative cash balance of $346,000. The question we have the answer is, why? This is a service that we charge a fee for. Okay, so clearly, and I want you to know, this is the third year I've been tracking this fund by itself. And last year, we had to come up with $146,000 to supplement this operation. The year before, we had to come up with $260,000 to supplement this operation. We're on board now with the way things are looking, even with the reduced staffing that we've done of having to come up with more than $200,000 for wastewater operations. Okay? Just above that, you see the $168,000 negative number? That's solid waste. Why are we paying waste management to collect garbage for all our customers, yet aren't we supposed to be charging enough money to cover our expenses? Okay, just a column. And then I want you to go up to the next one above that. It's kind of in the middle. See that negative $120,000? That's our capital improvements project fund. The reason that's $120,000 in the hole is we decided to do the North Commercial Street that was grant funded. How did that not cover all its expenses, did it? So we are short $120,000. I want you to understand that Gary has an issue with grants. I also have an issue with us giving away services that we're supposed to pay for. And I want you to know plainly, Commissioner Gandy was on the right track when he explained to the commission at our special meeting that we were not treading enough in our expenses to recoup our operational costs. This is showing right here over $328,000 in excess spending every month. We've only projected a possible $200,000 savings, basically. So I'm just basically landing on the line and letting you all know we're in bad shape financially. Now, the next columns, the next three columns, I'm showing our investments that we have, the 442,000. Those are there, obviously, for several reasons, but the primary reason I like them there is to cover our required reserves, which is the last column, which shows that we should be, we should always have a cash balance in each fund that ties down, not the total cash balance. We don't care that we have $2.2 million. What we care about is does the general fund have a cash balance as of today of $791,000? It currently has a negative balance of $617,000. We are not lucky per the Department of Finance requirements and honestly, good governmental accounting to ever let a fund go into the negative. So what are we doing? I'm transferring money from the funds that have it into the general fund to meet a minimum requirement for our reserve into the general fund, and then to cover those other negative losses that we have. So what I'm telling you is we're at the end of our rope. Do you have any questions?
I have a question, Gary.
Yes, sir.
So on, isn't it in June or July of this, this year? Are we supposed to have another increase? We divided out that last increase over a two-year period? Or have we already done the increases for that, for the water and sewer and all that?
We have, just to be clear, with the resolution that passed, our rate increases that we did about three or four years ago, built in a 2% annual increase into all three of our services, water, solid waste, and wastewater. And July 1st of every year, we implement that, that increase.
Okay, so every July, we increased by 2%, but for some reason, maybe times got away from me, I thought that we had increased last year, and then we had another one, or was it, did we divide that by six months? I don't, I don't remember. It was something like that, where we were going to increase their rates on that. So that's, that's the next question I was kind of wondering. Do we already do the increases on that, on the water bills?
Yes, sir. It was over a two-year period of time, and it was like 17% one year, 17% the next year. Now we're only doing 2% increases.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
This is rare.
Yes, sir. Mr. Combs?
I have a question for Gary. Gary, let me ask you this. I appreciate you being crystal clear about this now, but why weren't you crystal clear about this two months ago, or four months ago, or six months ago?
Well, I like my job, and I'll stop at that.
But your job is to take care of our finances, correct?
Yes, sir, and I'm an active employee.
I understand it.
And I cannot control the agenda.
Come again?
And I cannot control what gets on the agenda. You have to know that when we have a last DFA quarterly report, I have an interest in giving you more information.
I would just like to hear more, Gary, I would just like to hear more directly from you when we ask you, do you have anything to report? I think that's a perfect opportunity for you to let us know exactly where we're at. Or is there something that's hindering you, Gary, from doing that?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. For example, some projections and things. We have in that negative cash balance for the general fund, technically, it's over 1 point, almost 1.2 million in the negative. Why? Because we spent a grant we received of $507,000. We got it back in November of 2019. That is a grant that does need to be spent within its three-year period. That's a future obligation for the Jackson Avenue reconstruction.
All right, Gary, what is your hindrance?
I... I'm not trying to be mean or anything here. The hindrance comes down to that I... I care about the people I work with, and I try really hard not to create an environment that would cause what we're in right now.
Well, I think that we're trying to create an environment that's transparent. I think that's critical.
Yes.
Not just now, but prior to this. Now, I'm sure you would, you would agree to that, Gary.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Combs. Commissioner Bowles, you have a question, sir?
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead with your question, sir.
Yes. First of all, I appreciate your honesty. This is why I repeat about goals. I want to know where we're going. I don't want to say that we don't have an idea. You need to have goals so we can achieve that goals. Third, what do you recommend that be doing?
We need to have another special budget session. Your commission needs to see the overall big picture of all our expenses, and then you can make a decision on where we should make our cuts, because we need to make more cuts. And we need to think about our future obligations, as you were mentioning. For example, the water mains and sewer lines under Main Street. We've obligated ourselves to the state. Once that project is finished, we have four years to pay for it. What are we doing to generate the money to pay for that water sewer line?
We need to get together, and we need to talk about this and see what we can to get things straightened out as quick as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Final note on this, I like the summary that's been put in place right here. I think the commissioner would, the commissioners would agree that we have a monthly, I know it can't fall at the last day of the month, probably about the 10th of the following month, a monthly summary of where we stand financially. This graph is perfect. Another thing is, is on anticipating GRT increase, would that affect, or how are you budgeting? This number at the bottom, are you budgeting based on projections? Or let's say if we have an increase on what we have currently, would that, would that, I know it will help, but what are your projections of that based on that number you have at the bottom, that negative number? Is it based on what number of GRT? What is the figure that we'd be having to come up with per month?
Of GRT, I don't have an exact number, but it would have to be in excess of probably 800,000 a month for the general fund, so.
And you're looking at a six-month period, or, or, I'm talking about to the, to the new fiscal year, which we projected six months?
I'm projecting it'll take us at least 18 months, possibly longer, to bring us to where we actually have a positive balance in the general fund.
Which we projected about two years out. Yeah, correct. The only reason why is when, when the commission, the board of commissions asked for reports, that's what we need to see. What number do we have to come up per month? Just kind of like, so that way we know if we're not meeting that number, then we need to, we'll see that there is adjustments being made. I think this graph right here is like Commissioner Combs stated. I think if this was given to us before making our decision the other night, it would have been helpful.
Yes.
I know that we're more verbal than we were with something in front of us, and it was hard to make a decision based on our communications about, especially during this, this type of meetings that we're having to do with Zoom meetings. It's a little difficult. So I think our expectation is for you, Gary, is to have a full report of what is out there and give us what, what we're asking for, and we're going to hold you to it in life. And I have to say, what Commissioner Gandy and Commissioner Combs said, that, you know, we do ask you. It's not like we don't ask you, and it's, we're not asking you, okay, put everything aside, and we're asking you a question. When we ask you a question, we want the full report. We don't want, like I mentioned earlier, we don't want you to hold your tongue, because you start holding your tongue, and then all of a sudden, we get problems later on, and it still falls back on you, Gary. I mean, it does, it doesn't matter. There's no excuse. Commissioner Combs makes an ask a question, it has to be answered fully. And same with Gandy and Bowles, as well as Commissioner Bernard. That's why we have these roundtables discussion at the beginning of the meeting, because we're asking you questions, and we ask, "How are we doing?", and you say, "Fine." We, that's, that's what we, that's the message we got, so we feel comfortable. But if, you know, if we start having issues, or you feel that we could have some in the future, we need to be notified, because we need to plan and not work under crisis. And I know currently we are working under crisis, and I don't like to work under crisis. But let's make a plan as a team and move forward, and we'll overcome this. So everybody feel comfortable. We will overcome this. I know we will. It's just the, the current circumstances that we are in. But I have to agree with all the other commissioners that, that we need to, we need this summary in front of us to make decisions. We can't be based on going back and forth with questions. We have to have hard numbers in front of us in order to make a good calculated decision. Thank you. Roll call, vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Combs?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Truulio?
Yes. Resolution passes. Moving on to the next one. Do I have a motion?
This mayor would like to make a motion to consider accounts payable.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Bernard. Gary, you have, for you, the payables list. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Yes, Gary Scott.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're all aware of the state that we're in. I'm wondering if there's an only way to get credit cards, you have these credit cards. Insurance? Stuff like that, so we know what we're paying out and what we're paying for.
We can, if you would like, sir.
Yeah, like that. See where we need to go with that, with everything. We need to do that. We need to make sure that we know where we're going. And it's going to be a little more of a burden, but at this point here, it would be, we don't want to see anything other than us having to do that, so I would appreciate that.
It has the detail on these pieces, if you wish to hear it now.
Sure.
I'll just start with the first one, 1229. It mentions here that long distance fuel transfer, obviously, through our medical department, they had needed some fuel, and that's the credit card they used for that. And that's what all these, there are a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 expenses, all related to transfer patients for fuel on basis of 1229.
Is that, is that from the ambulance, Gary, or was it the police department?
No, that's all ambulance.
Okay.
And then on the 1260, we needed some lights at the fire station. That $210 was to pay for lights that the fire station needed.
Yes, sir.
And then the 122797 was USPS, in other words, postage expense. I don't know what they may allow, but it was a postage expense for the police department. And then the 4124 were the several expenditures in there. It's a long list there. But to sum it up, there are some, well, I just kind of read a couple of the highlights. You know, the, the first thing said it was supplies for the Maria Abrams winter.
Oh, this is youth center.
Okay, yeah, so youth center supplies that were purchased, winter activity supplies, kids disposable things, and stuff related to Sam's Club, that they have Sam's Club purchased. And that's basically it. And then a movie for the kids for Thanksgiving. And then the next one, the 7010, I don't know what the PO, whatever other charge is.
I think that was for some of, I'd have to look, look at, pull up that purchase order to get that. Yeah, we'd have to look at that.
Okay. So anyway, and then on the 7176, a couple of police expenditures. The first one related to narcotics drug test kits, $248 of that 378. And then some sure temperature supplies that they... And then some sure temperature supplies that they purchased through Amazon, so $130 equals that 378. And then the other, the second, well, the Visa 7341, again, a police expenditure, fingerprint expenditures for three different personnel, $44 each. And then that's it, the Visa cards.
Okay, thank you very much, Gary.
Any other questions by the board? There's no other questions. I'd just like to thank the staff and as well as the management team for keeping the cost down. Roll call, vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes. Don't forget, we're paid. Commissioner Campos, would you lead us into closed session, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into, go into closed session pursuant to Section 10-15-1, New Mexico State Annotated 1978, subsection H8, Regarding the Purchase, Acquisition, or Disposition of Real Property or Water Rights Status of City Leased Property.
Second it. Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bernard. Roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Mayor Truitt?
Yes, we are in closed session.